We'll start with the pledge of allegiance led by Board Member Jorgensen. If everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think I saw Mr. Ken Johnson come in, so in place of him today, we'll have Reverend Alonso Mulberry lead us in prayer.
Come on up here.
Right up here to the podium.
By your heads, Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to come together. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for your people that are gathered here. We pray, God, that you will look on this company, that you will give guidance and give directions and give instructions. Thank you for every person that's represented here today. We ask for your hand to be upon this meeting, and bless it throughout, God, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna start our presentations with Mr. Joe Theobald, who is the principal of Middleton Bernie Elementary regarding Camp Osprey. Osprey.
All right, well, good afternoon, and thank you for having us. I'd like to invite our Mellon Elementary Camp Osprey members to come up. We've got Matthew, come on up, and Naveya, come on up. We had, oh, we've got several others, come on up.
All right.
And y'all just stand right out there in front so they can watch and see ya.
Smile for you.
It was my pleasure to be kind of the point person at Mellon Elementary School for Camp Osprey. Camp Osprey was something that was started by Professor Dr. Matthew Olson at the University of North Florida. He has set up these programs at every university that he's been at, so there's a program similar to it up at NC State, down in Miami, the University of Florida. It's a great program, and the camp part of Camp Osprey stands for College Awareness Mentoring Program. And what we did was kind of a pilot program, because all those cities that have these colleges, they have this opportunity to have these college students mentor their students. We don't have a university here in Putnam County, but Dr. Olson reached out to me through Jennifer Rivera at NEFEC and asked if we would like to set something up to do something completely different, which would be telecom mentoring. So we set up the telecommunications. Dr. Olson found our mentors. They met with our students. We picked 10 students in the first semester and 10 students in the second semester. And these students were chosen because they were top-notch students, they had a bright future, they were good behavior kids, and they needed an opportunity to see what college was all about. Now, to talk to you a little bit about the successes, excuse me, I've forgotten to invite someone else up before I go any further, but I want to tell you a little bit about Mellon as well. Before I go, though, any further, Ms. Diane Taylor needs to come on up here, because she was very instrumental in helping us put this all together. So, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Some of the successes that we had at Mellon started really when the school counselor, Carrie Hodges, informed me that what we might want to do is start with a preview lesson. And so what we would do, I would get the students out a couple hours early, and during their lunch, we would talk about what the lesson would be about. All of these lessons were built off of Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. And they went really well at first. They went even better after I took her advice and started previewing those lessons and had the students really start to think about these character traits that they needed to talk about with these college students, because talking to college students over a video conferencing might be a little intimidating. They did a great job in doing that. The students participated much more clearly, and we started really working on some of those character benefits that was a huge focus with these students. We were very fortunate then, through a grant, to be able to take our students to J.C. Penney's and buy them some business attire, so that the following week, we could take them to the University of North Florida, where they visited the campus. They got to see a dorm room. They got to see the campus gym. They got to eat at the all-you-can-eat buffet, which was their favorite part. They got to visit two of the colleges there, the College of Engineering, which had a lot of hands-on tools, and they had a great time with that. We also visited the College of Marine Biology, I believe. And besides it being a little smelly, we had a really good time there, learning about fish and wildlife right off our coast. But I have to tell you, the most impact that it had was on everyone at the school. One of Stephen Covey's seven habits is synergize. And synergize is where everybody comes together and kind of starts pulling together, and we end up being greater than the sum of our parts. And these 10 students, by coming out of class early, by wearing their T-shirts, which Matthew has worn for us today, and by participating in this, started conversations in all the classrooms. Students were coming up to me, "Wait a second, why don't you call me out for lunch early? Why don't I get to do this? What are they doing exactly?" And I was able to talk to them about college preparedness and talk to them about character traits. And the greatest part of all of that value was that, a year ago, we were having conversations with students about, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" And those conversations didn't end with college or career readiness. The boys wanted to play basketball and football, which, when I was in fourth and fifth grade, I probably did too. The girls didn't have that. They didn't have that as a goal. It was some different goals. This year at Mellon Elementary School, you ask a fourth-grade girl or a fifth-grade girl, not one that's in our group even, "What do you want to be?", and you hear pediatrician. You hear entomologist, which was my favorite, somebody wants to study insects. Exactly. You hear attorney, you hear teacher. You hear college and career paths in eight, nine, and 10-year-old girls that we weren't hearing a year ago. And that's hugely impactful at a school. It really, it makes it so much more enjoyable to get up and go and do the wonderful things that we do at our schools, and it shows us some real hope for our future. So that's what I had to say. Ms. Taylor would also like to say a few words about not only Camp Osprey, but also some other opportunities that we have. Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of my colleague Matt Olson from UNF, but a fun thing about this grant, the Camp Osprey, is they got to go shopping, if you can imagine. Each one had $100, and they picked out a professional attire. So J.C. Penney hosted that event, and I got to go for one of those, and it was just so exciting. Everybody loves shopping. So the kids would pick out what they wanted as a nice-looking outfit for a professional presentation. And also part of Camp Osprey was learning how to shake hands and how to look people in the eye and present yourself. So it's a great effort. And there's a grant that I wrote to go for Middleton Bernie for next year that hopefully we receive, and it'll be the same program for Middleton Bernie next year. But I had to tell you about something else that happened last Friday. It was Girls Can, which was still about inspiring our girls to embrace a career and to reach as high as they want to. And we identified at St. John's River College, we had a collaboration with UNF, and we identified careers, not just for girls or boys that anybody could pursue. And so we went out into the Putnam County community and asked women who were in those careers, "Would you come and present?". And 73 women said yes, and they all showed up, and it was, it was like Joe said, it was pediatricians and law enforcement and firefighting and medical arts and doctors and judges. And I'll tell you, I looked online and I searched famous people in Putnam County, and along came the name of Barbara Brown, and Asia did an insanely great job. She started with the Palacka Daily News. She's from NASA, but she's from Palacka. And she came, and everybody that presented in this event had Palacka roots or lives close by. And this good girlfriend of mine was the speaker judge, Angela Cox, that just wowed everybody and inspired them for their own journey. So it was a great event. We're gonna do it again next year on March 2nd, so watch and save the date. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
I do want to take the opportunity to recognize our students who are up here. We have Naveya Lee. We have Matthew Simmons. And we have Skyla Andrews. And they are three of our 20 students who participated in Camp Osprey, so we're very proud of them. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Our next presentation will be by Ms. Renee Huff, in recognition of teachers and students that have passed industry certifications.
Good afternoon, Board. In February was CTE Month, and we had several teachers here that brought their students in, and Crescent City wasn't able to attend, so today we're gonna continue with our spotlighting of our teachers and our students. So today I have Ms. Patricia Salz from Crescent City, and she's a health science teacher. She teaches allied health and EKG aid, and she has students that she will introduce. I have Wayne Martin. He is our welding instructor at Crescent City, and he'll introduce his students. And I have Sip Poulam, and she is our engineering and also our agri-science teacher at Crescent City. And at this time, I'd like for them to introduce their students, so they're gonna spotlight their industry certifications.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us. I don't have all my students here today, because some of them are playing their district softball championship, so they are not here, and I have a couple who have jobs. But the first student that I would like to introduce was a completer of our program last year, and he passed his Certified Medical Administrative Assistant credentialing exam, and that's Dennis Barlow. The students that are here tonight will be taking their EKG tech exams in April, and some of the students that are not here tonight have already passed their Certified Medical Administrative exams, and they're not here, there's like five, six of them. If you would like me to name them, I'll try to remember their names. It's Kaylee Roberts. Kaylee Roberts. Senior moment, Kaylee Roberts. There's so many. I'll think of them. The rest of these students have passed their Ready-to-Work credential, which is required by many, many employers in Putnam County and all over the state of Florida. They will not even accept an application from you if you've not passed it, and all those students out there have it, and I'm very, very proud of them. And these guys who are here will be taking, like I said, their EKG certification exam in April. So Madai. Madai Beninas. Zula Ventura. Ashley Harrison. She doesn't feel good today. She was a trooper. She came, so. Kaylee Sexton. And Kathleen Harrison. And that's my executive intern back there, but she's not gonna come up, are you? But anyway, these guys will be taking their EKG certification in April, and the ones that are not here have already taken their Certified Medical Administrative exam and will be taking their EKG tech in April as well. So this is my group. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Wayne Martin, the Crescent City welding instructor. And our young men and women, we have some girls welding also that are doing very well. They're gonna be certified as a G1, G3, or a G4 when they graduate, and they will have their certification paper, and that will get their foot in the door. But when they take a welding job, you have to get recertified for the job that you are going to. So the certification just helps them get their foot in the door. We have a pretty good little program down there, and last year we had six, all six of them got certified, and two of them are welding right now, and the other four are... Still don't know what they want to do. But I have 17 being certified this year, and three of them showed it. We have baseball games and all that going on right now. We have Jose Perez. Louis Perez. And Angel Arbeto.
Hi, I'm Sip Poulam. I am currently the ag science teacher and the engineering teacher. I took over for a retired teacher this year. So we only have eight people in engineering, three that are able to test for the certification. We've had some technical difficulties with our computer systems, but they're up and running. I was able to get one of them here, because the rest of them had family obligations for school bus and work obligations, but I have Cody Elam. And since our ag program, it's pretty new. We don't have any completers yet for that program, but I'm hoping the next two years we'll be able to get some ag science certificates going here.
Oh, you will.
Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next, we have, I'm gonna start with the Palacka High School Boys Basketball Team Coach Oxendine. If you'll come up and present your team and your coaches. We are so proud of the Panthers for making it to the Final Four and representing us well this year.
Well, thank you, thank you. Let me say good afternoon, first of all, to the Honorable School Board and to everybody in the audience. It's an honor to be here representing Palacka High School, our principal, Mr. Stout, J.T. Stout over here, and Palacka High Basketball Team. These young men put in a lot of hard work this year. They had to put up with me. And that wasn't easy at a lot of times, because I demand excellence. We came in with wanted commitment, dedication, accepting responsibility, and the non-making of excuses, and to have good students, first of all, and good citizens. And these young men are not just good basketball players, but they're good citizens and good students, and that's what we're proud of. That's what we're proud of. First of all, let me bring up my assistant coaches, because I didn't do this by myself. Coach Brian Walters, his assistant coach. Coach Alonso Mulberry. And we have some coaches that couldn't be here due to work. Coach Al Leonard. Coach Anthony Royster. Amp. And Coach Eugene Bly. Can we get them a round of applause, because they put in a lot of hard work to help this team get to this point. This is my first year as the head coach, but I've been assistant coach there since 2012-13, and, you know, Palacka has a great athletic program, a great basketball program. These young men, we started out with a goal, and the goal was to win the district championship. That was our first step. I told them this was a journey of steps. And the first step was to win our district championship, which they did, and they went on to win the regional, and to get to the state finals, semifinals. And I'm very proud of them for that, for working that hard. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce each one of them. First one is Tyrus Thomas, senior. Next one is Damari Pirifoi, senior. LeVar Smith, senior. Cameron Chandler, senior. And now we have Shamar Dumas, junior. We refer to him, he's called Boink, if anyone's wanna know. Brandon Hampton, junior. Darren Johnson, junior. We have Mitchell McKinnon, sophomore. He's called Bird. Wadante Smith. He's called Whub. Whub. W-U-B-B, Whub. We have Wesley Roberts, a freshman. Malik Buford, freshman. And we have our team manager, Travis Williams. He helped us out a lot. We have two players that aren't here, Anthony Royster, Duca, he's not here, and Alex Session, he's not here. They couldn't be here today. But these young men, they worked hard. But also, I want to recognize the parents. Would the parents of these young men stand up if you were here in the audience? Because they supported us very well. Thank you. And I'd like to invite Mr. Stout up to stand with the team, because he's, the principal is my boss, and he supported us, so I want to thank him for that.
You need to get out of there. I usually just hide, I duck behind somebody. Right there is my nephew. Is he a great nephew?
Bird, your nephew?
Yeah. I love the different hairstyles. No, he's my great-great. Dad is my nephew, and he's dad is my great, he's my great-great.
You can't figure out how many kids you all forgot, how many others did you all?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming and y'all for honoring us today, for honoring this team. That's a special privilege. They should always remember that. And this year was just the beginning. We're gonna have another great year coming up next year. Thank you.
Now I'd like to call up Coach Josh White, and he's going to introduce his state finalist wrestling, well, his wrestling team, and they made it to the state finals as well this year.
All right, I'm Josh White. Hope you can see me. I want to, I've coached wrestling here for six years. I graduated here in 91. Wrestling, I went to college in wrestling, that was a while ago. Anyhow, this year has been a good year. Overall, wrestling's tough, if anybody's been involved with it. It takes several hours of grinding every day, every afternoon. As they come out, they're tired, they're sweaty, they're hungry typically, because they're all cutting weight to an extent. It's a long season, starts end of October and ended just in the end of March. So, and that's typical, even if you don't go to states, it's a long, long season, takes a lot of work. It's brutal, a lot of injuries. One of them had to recover from an injury and finally recovered and was able to make it to state. But like Coach Brian, I wish my assistants had made it today, because without them, this would not have happened. I was out of the season for a month with some medical issues with my family, so without, and I'm gonna recognize them by name, and I want to thank you guys again for this, because I've been doing this for many years, had several state finalists in several different sports, and this is the first year that the board, and I thank you again, has recognized these kids for doing this, because this is hard on them. You know, we're there, we're yelling at them, they're the ones doing the work. They're the ones suffering, and they're looking at us like, "Why are you making me suffer?" You know, but then they see it in the end. And first one would be Jeremiah Passmore. He's been helping me the last two years, and without him, this wouldn't have happened the last two years. And then Johnny Givens, which some of you guys may know, he was a state champ in 1982, I think. He was wrestling state champ in 1982, I believe it is. He's always been around, he's been helping since, he used to beat me up, to be honest with you, when I was in high school, he really did. And then, and then we have a state champ from 2000, year 2000, Elijah Campbell. He was a state champ for Palacka High School. He just got hired on this year, and he's been out helping the team. And without those three, this would not have happened. This would not have happened at all. I wish they were here, they were supposed to be here, but I think they had other family obligations. I also want to thank Mr. Stout, myself, because, like I said, I've taken, I've coached four different sports, and we have paid people go to four different states in those sports, and Mr. Stout's for, this is not anybody on any other principal, before I say that. This is the first principal that showed up to a wrestling tournament and got to see how long it is and how crazy it can be. It's a long day. You got there, probably, what, about 10 o'clock? The kids, the two guys here weighed in at 8 o'clock that morning? 7, that's right, you're right. We weighed in at 7. We got up at 5 to make weigh-ins, make sure we were under weight. They didn't wrestle till 1 o'clock, something like that. So we sat from after weigh-ins, and they really couldn't eat. They had to make weight. They couldn't eat, because they're gonna wrestle. They didn't wrestle till 1 o'clock. So it's a long day. And then we didn't leave the gym until 11? No, it was before 11. I would say about 10, 10:30, we didn't leave, and we had to come back the next morning. So it's a long day, and we've had several tournaments like that. And the parents, we got two parents back here, I saw them both, if they would stand up, they had to put up with their kids being gone with me for two nights in a row, many times. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce them, and I hope memory serves me right, we had an argument about their records. And we're gonna start with the weight classes. 195-pounder is a junior, Brian Smith, with a 33 and 7 record this year. And then my 220-pounder, Ira Dixon, he's a junior, he had a 29 and 12 record. And the good thing about them being juniors, they get to do this again next year, and we should be able to get it, so let's hope for the best.
Hopefully you'll be able to teach them, because I know Mr. Stout doesn't know anything about that.
He knows about bees, though. And now we have one more student from Crescent City High School that we would like to recognize.
Anastasia Baltista, she made it, and she is gonna be doing her EKG tech, and she's done her Ready-to-Work and her American Heart Association Healthcare Provider B certification, and she's gonna do well on her test. And I'd like to thank Ms. Higginsbotham and Ms. Huff for all their help and your help as well. Thank you.
Another senior moment here.
Thank you. We're now at the public comment section of our agenda, and I need to make a couple of things very clear. We have a total of 30 minutes for this section of our agenda. Each person has three minutes. We've got 10 people, all speaking to the topic of media specialists. So if your three minutes are up in the middle of a sentence, you're gonna have to stop, because we have a workshop concerning our budget after this meeting is over. And it's not that we want to cut anybody off, but we are on a tight timeframe. And I do want to make you all aware that no action, no voting is taking place on this today, not until May. Okay, our first person that we have, I believe you were here last time, weren't you? Dugan Whiteside from Browning Pierce PTO.
She's Dugan, Kathy's helping me.
My name is Dugan Whiteside. I reside at 212 School Road in East Palacka. I'm here to address the subject of media specialist. It's not my position to discuss with the board the importance of... It's not my position to discuss with the board the importance of reading to our young people. Y'all are fine educators, and you're well aware of that. Neither is my position to discuss with you the budget, I'm not familiar with it, and those are your decisions to make. I understand the issues associated with trying to balance a budget. Having said that, I want to emphasize the nurturing and welcoming that the media specialists do with the libraries, particularly in the elementary schools. You know, if you set a student on a path of loving reading, that's gonna last them a lifetime, and I think the media specialists do an excellent job in that regard. I also think that what this issue comes down to is a perception that paraprofessionals can do the duties of the media specialist, and I don't share that viewpoint. And I also want to make the point that I think it's a question of accessibility to the library. If a student is interested in reading and wants to go in there and get a book and everything, then if they are confronted with an issue that, well, you can't come in here, you don't have a parent with you, or the person that's working here is meeting the bus or doing other things, it's very discouraging for them. You want that open, welcoming situation in a library. And the final thing I'd like to say, Mr. Surancy, you were recently elected, a lot of people have put a lot of faith in you to guide this county and the school, and I would just respectfully request that you redouble your efforts to obtain funding from whatever sources you can, so that we do not have to eliminate media specialists from the Putnam County schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Lenora Earls.
Hello, everyone. I'm coming to you as a teacher. I think that Ms. Crawford has a few more years on me in the English Language Arts Department, but, you know, my heart has been into reluctant readers, and I'm here in support of the media specialists, because I cannot tell you what a valuable asset they are when you have a kid that, "I'm not gonna read, I'm not gonna read, I'm not gonna read." And then you find something that they're interested in, and you can go, "Hey, go see so-and-so." And that kid comes back to the classroom, the big ol' beaming face, it's just, it's beautiful. But as I was coming, I had a student that could not, I mean, it's not my student, I don't want to say that, but a student handed me their letter that they wrote, and the board got a copy of it. So I wanted to read it to you, I won't say his name, her name. "All right, I'm a senior at Interlocken High School, I'm not able to attend the meeting today, but I'd like to voice my opinion. Mrs. Jones is my media specialist, without her help this year, I would not know what I'd done my junior and senior year. She has helped me with scholarship applications, helping with research for my senior thesis, and finding great books to read. She's taken the time to help me any way I need it. She only helps me this way, but any student that needs help. In January, she coordinated a Celebrate Literacy Week program with Interlocken Elementary. I was fortunate to participate, we went to visit Interlocken Elementary and read to the elementary students, it was a lot of fun to share in that experience. I helped Ms. Jones implement a book promotion in February, which encouraged students to read, it was a blind date with a book. The students enjoyed it, at the end of the blind date with the book, she held a drawing and gave away a big box of chocolate. Without a media specialist, our guest speaker is gonna come in to do book talks? Our reading promotion is still gonna happen in our school if students don't have a media specialist? Are students gonna recommend, have someone recommend them a good book? Are someone gonna, are students gonna have help, someone to help with research? Are students gonna have someone help fix their Skyword whenever it gets locked? Who will be in charge of Accelerated Reader and Awards and Celebrations? If the media specialist no longer works here, who's gonna take her place? Will they know what they're doing? Maybe it should be considered, take away useless programs, and this is a kid, that the county pays for, instead of cutting budgets and take away media specialists. Our media specialist helps. I can't begin to stress how upset I am, this school needs a media specialist, she shouldn't lose her job because the county wanted to make budget cuts. My siblings need her. I pray that God is leading you in your decisions for what is best for the students in Putnam County, and I concur, thank you."
Now Lenora, you were, you were one of those students that used to say, "I'm not gonna read, and you can't make me," I remember that. Long time ago, she could hit a softball better than she could read.
Next is Lou Greco from Fame, former president of Fame.
That was a movie, wasn't it?
Oh, a TV show.
A TV show.
Hi, I'm Lou Greco, I'm a neighbor from St. Johns County. I actually was a school teacher, an ESE teacher, a school librarian, director for instructional technology and library services in St. Johns County, and now I'm the librarian at Gamble Rogers Middle School in St. Johns County, because I didn't like it after drop. So I'm back there. And the reason I came were twofold, before Fame even contacted me about coming to speak to you, because I'm a media specialist, I'm at a middle school where your students and our students travel back and forth a lot. Jenkins Middle School and my school have a lot of kids that come back and forth, I think between 12 and 15, right after Christmas break, kids that come back and forth. So I deal with, your kids are actually my kids sometimes, and my kids are your kids sometimes. So I really have a real good feel of what's going on with the kids. And I want to share a little bit, I'm not gonna share about what school librarians do, because you already know that and you'll probably hear some more, but I did want to share some research with you that I heard a couple of years ago that really had me concerned, especially with kids in poverty. So I'm gonna put my glasses on so I can actually read what I wrote. And as you know, there's, you've probably heard before, there's over 60 studies about the relationship between standardized test scores and a full-time school librarian at the school. But one recent research really, really captivated me, and it was a Pennsylvania study of 2012. So they researched the whole state of Pennsylvania. And what, some of the key findings they found were that students who are poor minority and have IEPs, but have a full-time librarian are at least two to five times more likely to score advanced on the Pennsylvania writing test. So what is really key to me is, these are students that are, and the Pennsylvania state was one of the few studies that actually pulled out minority students, poor students, and students with IEPs to see the impact the school librarians had. And that was one thing, the African-American Hispanic students that had access to library collections of 12,000 books or more, which is kind of normal for a school, doubled their chances of obtaining an advanced writing score on the Pennsylvania test, and cut their risk of scoring below basic in half. So that's pretty significant information. And those of you that know, access to books especially can offset the effects of poverty. And we have that issue all over Florida, and you do here in Putnam County also, and I do at my school with kids living in poverty who don't have books. The only place they can get a book is from my library, and, because they don't have access to go to the public library often, but they do have it from me. As you know, Dr. Ben Carson was not even reading at the fifth grade level until his mama started making him read library books and write reports every month, and then he became a world famous neurosurgeon. So I just wanted to keep that kind of in the back of your head about these types of students, and how important libraries are, and how effective it is in increasing their achievement. The Florida study of 2002 from UCF found that elementary students scored 9% higher in their reading, middle school 3.3, but high school students actually scored 22.2% higher in reading, that's back when we were given FCAT, in schools that had a full-time librarian.
I'm sorry, the three minutes are up.
Thank you, Mr. Greco. Next we have Allison Greenen.
Hey, Allison.
Hi, my name is Allison Greenen, I live in Keystone Heights, but I am a seventh grader at CH Price Middle School. I'm also a library assistant in one of my elective periods there. In both my fifth and sixth grade year, I received an award for having the highest accelerated reader score, and I truly believe that I would not have gotten that award if it weren't for the encouragement that I got from the librarians. The librarians I have worked with do all that they are required to do in the library, but then they tend to go above and beyond to make sure their students are getting all the required reading they need, and the students who especially do not like reading make sure they get some rewards when they do read. I can pretty much guarantee that without a properly trained librarian in the library, students will stop reading as much, have trouble finding a book that they enjoy, will stop doing AR, and may not even return the books that they do end up checking out. This, these reasons are why I believe that the librarians should not be cut from the schools.
Allison, I commend you for getting up and talking.
Yes, thank you so much for coming.
Very impressive.
Okay, next we have Randy Smith.
Hello, my name is Randy, I reside at 114 Muscular Avenue in Interlocken, Florida. I'm a student at Interlocken High School, in the 11th grade, actually. I felt like this was a matter that I actually needed to take part in, you know, because you hear people all over social media in your school, you know, they complain that they want to make a difference, but I tell everybody, you can't make a difference unless you do something about it. So this is why I'm here today. I actually wrote this prior to not knowing that I was coming, so excuse some of this. So I said, "I'm not sure if I'll be recognized, or if what I'm saying is gonna help make a difference, but I hope that at least what I have to say will help me get my point across." I understand that, you know, you've had to make some decisions on, you know, the budget cut, but you, it's not set in stone, as far as I understand. The PCSD system is, in the state of Florida, I'm guessing, is taking away the jobs of the media specialist, putting in paraprofessionals in their place. I've known many media specialists throughout all my years of schooling, and they have all made a difference to me. They do make a difference in our school. It's pretty sad that they aren't recognized enough for the hard work they do around the school. You know, they order books, they keep textbook logs, you know, there's just so much more to their job than what we see, you know, there's a bigger picture. I was once told when I attended CH Price Middle School by Ms. Faith Church that you shouldn't judge a book by its cover, you never know how it reads. And she's a wonderful librarian, she's great at her job. Well, now at Interlocken High School, Ms. Lynn Jones, she's put an impact on me as well. She's helped me pick out books, you know, I'd never been one to read, I don't, I never loved it, but until they actually showed me the experience of reading, it made a difference to me. It's been brought to my knowledge, though, that, you know, there is things that you guys need to do to keep this town and this community functioning, and I do completely understand. I just hope that maybe you could, you know, change your mind about this one, because I had elementary school siblings, and they didn't like to read either, and I would tell them, "You remember the library lady, go see her." And they'd go in, and they'd come home with new books, and I'd read them, you know, to them when they went to bed. So it did make a difference. I know money is an issue, and people say our rural community, poor community, but I don't, I don't like to think of it as that. But I just, I just wanted to let you guys know that, you know, this is something that's important to these librarians. They do have a degree, you know, all of them, they had to have a media specialist degree to have this job. They went to college, you know, I just don't think that it's fair, you know, that it could be taken away from us so, so quickly, you know, we take advantage of this opportunity. So I have presented to you guys a petition of 340 signatures from our school.
Thank you very much. And I commend you two, as a student, really impressed.
Whose idea was it to do the petition?
Actually, a lot of students.
Oh, I was gonna give you a thumbs up.
Well, she brought it in.
Yeah, you brought it in, so thank you.
Next we have David Holdcroft.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Dave.
I just wanted to go on record and point out that the media specialists are a very important part of schools. Like everyone else has pointed out, there has always been the need for keeping track of the books and making sure everything is in order, and that there is a lot more to their jobs than what other people think. As a former library aide, myself, I actually understand this. Very proud of it, by the way. So with that being said, I just don't think you guys should cut the media specialists at all, because there's a lot more going on, and there's also way, way more books that they can introduce kids to. Like, I wasn't really that big on some of the Sunshine State Reader books my sixth grade year. Boy, was I wrong.
They were good.
Yep, very, as Ms. Gouillard would know, going down memory lane. So, in all seriousness, I really do believe that you guys, I know the budget's important to decide and all that, but I would like to be able to make sure that everyone here is able to speak their mind, and, oh my gosh, I'm talking in circles.
You're fine.
All right. Should've remembered this wasn't open mic night. All right, so, the other thing I wanted to bring up is that you are able to learn other books from, I mean, learn about other books from your media specialists. There's always good recommendations, and you're not gonna find that in a paraprofessional. Granted, I'm trying to get my own paraprofessional certification, even I can't match the skills of Ms. Church or any of the other media specialists. So with that being said, like I said, I know the budget is very, very complicated, way beyond my comprehension, but just remember, there are lots of students who would benefit from keeping them around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Dustin Rhodes.
Hi, I'm Dustin Rhodes, I'll be talking about you, about the media specialist. So whenever I was in middle school, I went, and I was selected out of everyone, there was only about 20, 30 kids, and this TOPS program, and it was to go and we would take a field trip all the way to Washington, DC. Well, not very many of us went and could afford it, so only about five of us had to go out and ask the teachers if they would sponsor us. Well, one of the media specialists did, and a few other teachers did, and with that, I thought, well, hey, maybe since they're doing me a favor, I'd go in there and learn more about the library. Well, I did, and it turns out I actually enjoyed reading more than I did. So I went in there, and we wind up having a summer reading project that year, and I found out that there's more books in there that I actually do like. So it started the journey of actually going to the library more. And now that I'm in high school, I'm an intern at the library, and seeing some of the stuff they do is not actually just checking books in and out, it's got to deal with the internet and Skywords, and cataloging and ordering new books, and then there's more stuff they do, like, they go and take their money out of their own pocket and start contests, the blind date with the book. This year they have March for Shamrocks, or Read for Shamrocks. And at the end of that, whoever gets drawn, they get a $25 gift certificate to Chili's. And they just theme different contests throughout the year. And then the ARs, they have, for the top each grade level, they get $50, which is cool. It helps having encouragement throughout the entire school, and that would end if we just had a library assistant in there, just a sub, as you would say. So, just to inform you and have thoughts.
About half of us were able to attend today. And we're here, of course, concerned with the prospect of losing media specialist at our schools. And we've, we're a sisterhood here, we meet once a month, we learn a lot from each other, we do trainings, we have guest speakers, we better ourselves and what we do as we meet every month. We've had the opportunity to gather some information and research, research that we would like to share with you, and Lynn Jones is going to introduce that.
Hi. Hi. We have binders that have a lot of information for you guys, from research to different programs that we do at our schools, newspaper articles, and we have one for each of you, and we'd like to thank Suzanne Buckles for her hard work on these. But we have a letter that we'd like to just share with you regarding the information we're going to be giving you today. Dear School Board Members, it is with great pride that the Putnam County Media Specialists have been able to compile information for you to review, demonstrating the positive impact we have on our students each and every day. While we realize that our district, along with others, faces a financial crisis in the next few years, we also realize that the absence of certified media specialist in our schools will also ensure a crisis in the education of our students. If you look at the demographics of our students that we serve, you should quickly realize why we are so desperately trying to keep our media specialist in our schools. Most of our schools serve students with low socioeconomic status, all have students who are homeless, food-challenged, and suffer from many associated effects of crippling poverty. One of the greatest educational barriers our students face is the lack of books in their homes, or if they do, there is no one available there to read the books with our students, to model reading just for joy, for the joy of it, and to stress the importance and love of reading to our children. When you look at the research from the School Library Journal, March of 2017, that we have provided, you will see that these, our most vulnerable children, are the ones who will most be impacted educationally by the loss of a trained media specialist. It is our hope, after reviewing the information provided, that you will gain a better understanding of the role of the media specialist in our schools, and that you will vote in favor of keeping a certified media specialist at every school. And that's sincerely from all of us in the Palms group. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, and others.
I had a poem I wanted to read, or are we out of?
We're out of time.
I'd love to hear a poem.
Okay, next we have Ron Leggett.
Sandy Earhart could do a poem, that'd be so great. Good to see you.
Except for me.
I'm going to save you some time and tell you that just about everything I want to say has already been said. I am Ron Leggett, I reside at Interlaken, I am the Senior Army Instructor at Interlaken High School, been there for almost eight years now. My media center specialist is a specialist in lots of other ways besides issuing books and ordering books and encouraging kids to read books. I believe she makes a difference, because she's, these are the things that's already been mentioned, makes a difference nurturing as a specialist, and encourages you to save money in other ways that you can. So, I'm not going to even go into that. I just want to say that she's been a real asset, and I think this, let's take the personality out of it, because I know you guys have to make admin decisions that are hard to make, especially when someone is a friend. But this is a position that I believe, and I know a good bit about administration, this is a decision, this is a position that I believe, Mr. Superintendent, is one that is close to the students, and perhaps there could be other means so that you could leave this position here intact. Thank you for all that you do, because you do a lot of stuff behind the scenes nobody knows about. But as one great president, Teddy Roosevelt, said, "There's no limit to the good a person can do if they don't care who gets the credit." So, thank you.
Thank you. they would like to pull anything, Ms. Gillyard?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
And I do not either, so?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion is approved.
No motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor?
Let me ask, let me ask one question.
Okay.
The sheriff is here, and is he here?
I was wondering why.
Is there a reason, is there something?
He's here to arrest you.
Is there something in the budget that you're?
He's going to be. Y'all aren't here to arrest him and take him away? Will you please?
I thought he was looking for Suzanne, she was out there somewhere. All right, go ahead.
Glad to have y'all here.
I didn't know if there was something on the consent agenda that you guys were here for.
I couldn't find anything, I know. We were like, oh my God, did we forget to put them on? Okay, so we need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, now we need to go out of regular session and into emergency session. That's what you used to do to me. We have one, two, three, four items that we need to vote on. The first is an overnight trip by the Palacka High School ROTC to Zephyr Hills, Florida, for the state drill meet. I believe this is probably?
A move we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next is, am I okay to read these out? Personnel matter, 10-day suspension of employee A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is a personnel, personnel matter, 10-day suspension of employee B.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the last is a personnel matter, 10-day suspension of employee C.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're back into regular session now. Next is unfinished business, which we haven't, don't have any.
Boarding of reports.
Nothing under new business, so it's time for our board member reports. I'm going to let y'all volunteer, who would like to go first this time?
I pass. We've got, we've got a workshop in just a little bit, so I'll.
We've got a half an hour.
He needs a nap.
Okay.
I don't, I need a nap.
Okay, Ms. Cumming.
I first want to say thank you to the students who come, that means a lot to each one of us up here. We hear a lot from adults, but when students come and have the, yeah, it really does, it's a lot of difference. And again, I was just on the phone today with someone that said, "If only the people knew what media specialist actually did." And I said, "You're right, and then I got this." So, thank you for all the work, because I don't think anybody understands. I wholeheartedly know, I was one for, before I was on the board, and I know exactly what you all do on a daily basis that cannot be put into words, but this is very helpful, because it does show all the student impact. And if we have a vision of impacting student education and student growth, if we don't have this as a focus, then I have a hard time understanding the other ways to have this growth. So, this, this is huge, and I just want to make that public statement, because it's very important to me personally, and I know you guys are losing sleep over it, as I think we all have budget concerns, but it's, it's just something that's real near and dear to my heart, so thanks for putting all the work in, thank you students for coming, because it is important, and student growth is the number one focus. If we put the core of students in the middle, and you don't put media specialist as a direct inside of that, in a direct collaborative working environment for the whole student accomplishment, then we're missing the mark on that. So, I just want you to know, that is an important layer of the core of student growth, absolutely, 100 percent. So, thank you for coming.
Ms. Crawford, I misspoke. I realized, I thought we had to adjourn and go into the workshop quicker, but when Ms. Gillyard and Ms. Jorgensen threw, I'd be happy to say.
That would be wonderful, Mr. Buckles.
Oh, okay. I just say ditto to what Mrs. Cumming said in regards to our students. Having been at the school as a principal, I did see that the media specialist did do far more than, than I had previously thought. I mean, connecting the families, having family readings and all of this, and the parents would come and be excited, so I know what you do is impacting our students, and we do appreciate you. And to those that have come and spoken for you, the parent that shared from Browning Pearson, and we hear you, we hear you, and we're going to look at every option we can to make sure that these things will not affect our students negatively. My report is from Keep Putnam Beautiful. I attended last Friday's meeting at 12 noon at Beefo Brady's, and some of the things that they're doing and partnering with the Putnam County School District is awesome. I was informed that they are going to select, each principal will select 10 students that will be receiving computers, be it a laptop or whatever, so that those students can take them home and do tests, or, you know, work on them, and so I thought that was great. She said that she had met with you, Dr. Serency, and I just thought it was great that we're partnering with Keeping Putnam Beautiful, because this is our county, and just like we need everybody that's a part of it, we need to take care of what we have, and so it was a pleasure being on that committee. And we are going to be having some cleanup days, they did have one in Palacka Saturday, but there, there will be a, an entire county cleanup day on May the 6th. So, we're hoping that all of you in your own place, like when they had the last big one, I cleaned up in San Mateo, because that's where I reside, God's country, so we're hoping that wherever you live, you will get together and, and help keep it clean. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jorgensen?
Just to tag on to what Sandra said, I'm friends with Marcia, the director, and I know she's also trying to get recycling going in the district. We don't right now, I don't know what all the problems are, but she's supposed to be working with, with us. I think it's important that the students receive the modeling that we're recycling at our schools, if nothing else. And then they go home, and I recycle, because my kids came home and nagged me 25, 30 years ago, and that's what happened, so, Keep Putnam Beautiful really is a great partner to have with the schools. They have a garden down, a community garden down in South Putnam, at one of our schools.
Share back with us, yes.
And they're trying to get it going in all areas of the county. Also, regarding media specialists, we won't vote on that until mid-May. I am the only non-educator up here besides the attorney, and I have read everything that's come across my desk, so to speak, and I am very aware now of everything that the media specialists do. And like Ms. Cummings said, if we're looking to get above that half mark on our graduation rates, et cetera, et cetera, just to have well-rounded students, I think that that's a vital position as well. So, I think everybody can calm down about it, but that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
Mr. Buckles?
Okay, to the media specialist, it, you know, really, we kind of got the cart before the horse, and, and the principals were notified to go ahead and tell people where they may be cutting in this next year, and it is a fluid process, and I can promise you that Mr. Serency didn't just wake up and say, "I'm going to come out and try to make everybody miserable." This is, this is something that you got to start somewhere, and you got to start hearing the reverberations and what's going on, and nobody here that, that knows anything about education, or, and there's no one in here that doesn't realize that reading is the portal to all learning, and that what you do is very valuable, and most of you, in some capacity, worked as media specialist when I was superintendent years ago, and I do have great respect for, for you. Candy Bacon, I'm a little iffy about, she, she threatened to burn my bear out there that I had mounted at Browning Pearson, but, in all, in good faith, I don't think she's a bear burner. We're, we're looking at this very closely, and we're going to try to do everything we can to not only take care of some of the needs that the district has this year, but I've talked to superintendent, and, and he's going to try to do things over a couple of years to try to replenish the fund balance, and get to where you can do things for teachers and, and help out. I have seen situations where some extra talented, non-certified media specialist have done tremendous jobs in media centers. That doesn't mean they can all do that, and that's not something that we would desire to have, because I know when Ms. Cummings was a media specialist, it was always real rocky down at Crescent City High, we had a lot of trouble with her, and, I'm kidding, you know that. Anyway, you guys hang in there, we're going to do the best we can, and, and that's all we can do. The board really, really controls allocations and, and budget and policy, and the split here is that the superintendent, by law, has to be the one that places people in their positions, and we really can raise Cain about it, but there's not a whole lot we could really do if that were to happen, but trust me, he is as sensitive, has been behind closed doors with me that, to these problems, and we've just got to get to a, a point that's, that's good. Anyway, that's it.
Okay, you sure?
Sure. I like to wax eloquent, because my wife, my wife looks at me back there like.
Before I speak to our wonderful media specialist, I've got a couple of announcements, a couple of things I need to say. The fair, oh my goodness, y'all have got to go to the fair and see all of the student exhibits and the artwork, it's just amazing, and there were some few pigs there sweating it out last night, that they weren't going to weigh at least 240 pounds, and some of them didn't and got sent home, but there are many, how many, 108, 9 something, there's lots of pigs out there. So, that, that swine show is tonight, and if, if we can get out of here in time, I'd like to go to that. April 4th, we are going to be having an energy management workshop, so put that on your calendars. April 18th, we'll be having another budget workshop.
Are these at 2 o'clock, Madam Chairman?
Yes, I think that's what we decided, 2 o'clock.
The first one was April?
April 4th, and that's energy management, I think someone from Florida Power and Light, am I correct, is coming to talk to us about our energy management?
And the time is 2.
2, and then April 18th at 2, again, we'll be talking about the budget. I just want to say that as an English teacher for 25 years, I could not have done my job without the media specialist that I worked with. I'm talking Anna K. Morgan, Artie Allard, Sophie Decody, Lori Gallagher, Katie Purcell, I could, I could not have done it without them, and, you know, I, I really don't want to lose y'all. But we found ourselves in a, really, a no-win situation, as far as money's concerned, we don't have very much, but I sure don't want to lose media specialist, because I know, as a teacher, what y'all do, and I know that your jobs positively affect literacy in Putnam County, and so just hang in there, that's all I've got to say, hang in there. We are adjourned.
Charlie is a superintendent.
I really have to go to the bathroom, that's why I'm trying to get out of here. Go ahead, Charlie, hurry up. Hurry up.
I'm taking my portion short.
I'm so sorry.
It's only, it's streaming live.
Well, listen, it's a fact of life.
David just gets up and disappears.
Yeah, I just announced it to everyone. I'm sorry, y'all.
I feel pressured right now.
Go ahead, I've waited this long, I'm, it's all this coffee.
Yeah, Jane said it's gonna be a two coffee pot dated.
Yeah.
I'll be very brief. Welcome to our sheriff, Giloch, for coming today, glad to have you. And he's, we've also been talking about some of our budget recommendations, so we'll be discussing that later with him. I did just come back from Tallahassee and wish y'all the best, I know you're going next week. And there's a lot that, there's a lot on the table that's gonna affect our districts financially and otherwise. And maybe I can clue you in and kinda give you some ideas of what, or some issues to look at that will directly affect us. We do have a booth at the fair, if you get a chance to go by there.
It looks good, too.
Yeah, we, we have a video going, and we're really trying to reach out and recruit bus, bus drivers. So again, if you're interested in driving a bus, come on down and we'll sign you up. And?
Not you, Sandy.
I just also want to mention about our media specialists, and thank you all for coming. We did, we did ask them to come along with our CRTs Friday a week ago. Had, we met with them, gave them the opportunity to ask questions anonymously. We had it on the computer screen, and of course, we invited the board to come, and I know Ms. Cummings came to one of the meetings. But again, we wanted to just have a frank discussion about what's going on. And I just told them, I know, you know, it's not happy news, but we wanted to make sure they understood what we, you know, what we're facing. And give them the opportunity to ask questions. And, and to look each other in the face and talk about it, because these are not easy decisions. And it's, we don't want to sit up here and make decisions and not understand how it affects people. So again, this is just a process going. We just want to have your input, and I think we've got some great input today. And hopefully to help us all decide which direction to go. Finally, we had two collegiate high school parent meetings since our last board meeting. They were well-attended, people in Palacka and in Interlaken, and a lot of people interested in being a part of that. So we'll be starting that next year, and should be a, give people a choice between the Collegiate High School and Cambridge. You know, we started Cambridge and Crescent City as well, so I want our students to have choices about acceleration classes. And our industrial manufacturing classes, I understand, is, you know, we're signing kids up for that. And that's gonna be a great start as well for all of our high schools, so that's all I have.
One thing I'd like to mention is, and y'all may have done this, I don't know, make sure that your high school guidance counselors meet with the people that are in charge of the collegiate high school, so they can answer any questions.
They actually, they actually came, the high school counselors came to those meetings, so. Yeah, they're very much, as far as I know, they came.
Okay, can I bang the gavel now? This meeting's adjourned.